Can we get motion to go back into open session, please?
I'm going to open session at 6:06.
Thank you. Counselor Florence has made the motion. All those in favor? That is carried. So we were going to have a delegation tonight, but unfortunately, we are going to be postponing that to a future meeting. And so we will get that set up for something in the future here. But with that, let's move right down to our two bylaws that we have today. So just a reminder, we have done first reading on these. And the way that I thought that we could go about this today is actually to start at the top of each of the documents. If there's anything that people would like to see changed, we'll go through and you can propose your changes. If there's consensus on that, we will add that to one large motion. If there's not consensus on the item, we will have a vote on that to determine the outcome of that. The outcome of that will then go into the main motion, if that makes sense. What I'd also would like to do, just so that we can get through the documents, is that we'll go page by page. If you happen to have something or another thought that's not related to what we're currently talking about, if you could please write that down and then we'll do one more round at the end, just in case there's something that comes up for somebody. Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Question of clarification. Can we start with questions as well? Questions of clarification?
Yeah. So why don't we just start right there then? So we do have our peace officer with us today, as well as our administration team that could answer any questions. I'm assuming you have a question?
I have a few, yes.
Okay, excellent. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, to the community peace officer, about the dog registration fee being removed. Although it's not a large source of revenue, is it a way to get people to register their cats in town? Do you think it's controlled to be used?
To answer Counselor Florence's question, it is. It is and it isn't. I'm not sure. Did we remove animal registration?
Correct.
I don't recall moving that from a section.
I believe that they just included fines, not actual fees, where there used to be the fees before, from my recollection.
There's proposed new fees for animals on these four fees that does have a registration fee attached to them. It's a separate attachment. It's the fourth one down was.
So what was the question again?
I was just wondering if you were recommending that the fee be removed because it wasn't on the fines, but if it's in a different document, I might just not have seen it.
Yeah, I believe instead of having... Sorry to answer your question, Counselor Florence. Instead of having a fee schedule policy for the bylaw, Animal Control Bylaw, in a separate document, I think you're just going to add fees and fines to the Animal Control Bylaw in the bylaw and not have a policy for it, we've had this.
Okay, so the fines are going to be in the bylaw, the fees are going to be separate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Administration, did you want to guess? Oh, that is all actually Mr. Randall jumping in.
Thank you, Mayor Montina. Yes, just to be clear, we're proposing that the, excuse me, fines for violations of any of the regulations contained in the draft Animal Control Bylaw are right there in the Animal Control Bylaw. But the fees, which currently, that's not for a penalty, but that's just fees for pound keeping services and registration of dogs and licenses and those sorts of things. They are currently in the Fees and Rates Bylaw, we call it, and we're proposing that they remain there, but just that we've altered them somewhat and added a few new ones. So it's a little bit more extensive of a list. And I know it doesn't show it here, but those two documents, the existing fees in that schedule are there. And then we have the new proposed ones. They could, in theory, be compared side by side. You can see what you like or maybe have further questions on it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I actually just ask a question now before you can carry on? Why is that?
It doesn't have to be that way, but I think that's what we typically see in the past. And many municipalities have those fines right in the bylaw itself. But we've got to keep in mind to charge a fee, I've always been told by lawyers, it should be in a bylaw, not in a policy. But that wouldn't prevent us, at the same time, to your point and line of questioning, from, for example, taking those animal fees that we're proposing be associated with the Animal Control Bylaw, making them a separate and complete schedule and just including them in the Animal Control Bylaw as well. Just a choice, a preference, and I think nothing would be more or nothing less.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just as to that, are both equally as easy to, say, apply to sort of land or house tax or land tax? Either work, or is it easier to collect it under the way you're proposing?
Thanks. Through the chair, to Counselor Caldwell's question. With these kinds of fees and fines, and maybe our peace officer will know better than I, but I'm not sure that those can go onto a tax roll. I thought that was more for things like cleanup of unsettling property. Whereas this would simply eventually go before a court and the court would make a decision. You owe $100 or not, or $50 or whatever. And I think that is where it would end. That's my understanding.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I thought perhaps in the manner which we used to have it, sort of stopped us from being able to do that, so.
All right, we'll go back. Counselor Florence, you have other questions?
Yeah, thank you. Through the mayor, to the peace officer. So regarding chickens in town, is there any impact on neighboring poultry farms if we continue to allow chickens in town?
To answer your question, Counselor Florence, there would be... You're asking if there is an impact?
Yeah.
In what regard?
So with diseases and stuff, I know that when I was talking to one of the residents, they brought this up, that sometimes if chickens have diseases, the herds close by have to then be dealt with. And I know we have a chicken farm pretty close in the county. So has that ever become an issue in the past that anybody's ever pointed out, even that chicken farmer?
To answer your question, I haven't heard of anything like that happening. Urban hens program are pretty new.
Yeah.
They're a pretty new thing that has been brought back. And I don't think residents, first-hand chickens, would have the effect as, say, like a commercial poultry farm would with stuff like that. It's definitely something a resident would have to watch for, just like you would have to watch for any other sickness or disease that your other domestic animals would have, right? Parvovar, rabies, or whatever your other animals could get. But as far as I know, from my knowledge, I...
Thank you. That was kind of a random question. I just have a question. Section 3 states general rules for registering dogs and the number of dogs, and then it talks about the number of cats below. But it doesn't require the residents to register the cats. What is the rationale behind only registering dogs?
To answer your question, Counselor Florence, it's really like it's easier to bring a dog home running at large when it's registered. I can catch a dog running at large. I can't catch a cat running at large as easy, right? So that's the rationale. You're not supposed to let your cats run at large either, but it's pretty hard to get everyone to come registered, your cat, your dog, and everything else.
Yeah, I can understand what you're trying to do, for sure.
Can I ask further on that? Through the mayor, to our CPO officer. Have you ever heard of a community ever having cats being registered?
To answer your question, Counselor Caldwell, I haven't.
You haven't? It was a conversation that we had before, just a free registration for cats. Like for concerned pet owners, if their cat gets out, that it might help get them home, right?
Yes, like it is definitely... It is a home run when if we do hitch out, you know, someone turns in a lost cat and they have owner contact information on it. But like you said, it's pretty hard to catch cats as opposed to a dog, right?
Both, of course. Of course it would be.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a question through the mayor to administration. I'm not sure who. Was there consideration given to the land use bylaw when proposing that animal rescues be allowed in town?
Through the mayor, to Counselor Florence, we have not yet explored the land use bylaw in relation to these particular bylaws, but if something we could certainly look at.
That's the only question.
Thank you. Other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. We've got a couple. I don't know who would be the best to answer them. Just a generic question is, these leading things out of the bylaw going to cause issues for things? For example, when I was looking at the previous dog bylaw, it was talking about not allowing a breeder's license in town. Now, the current version does not state that. So is it more of if it doesn't state that, then you can't do that? Or is that can be an issue where we have to have it clearly defined and say, okay, this isn't something that we're letting people do?
A defensier's license now?
To answer your question, Counselor Ackerman, is something that can be enforced, right? If people are allowed to breed their animals, right?
Yeah.
They don't necessarily... You know, there's no provincial or licensing that would require someone to breed their animal, right? We allow unaltered dogs in town. It's your choice if you don't want to spay or litter your animal. It's also your choice if you want to let them have puppies, right? Where we would get the controls for that is the amount of dogs that you have, or your dogs or cats at your residence, right?
Okay. I think if that good though, were you speaking about if people were doing it as a business?
Yeah, that's how the previous one kind of ended, for like a breeder's license.
And so we do have like a defensier's license, and then there is actually somebody in town. Is it Earth Angel Laffordutus? She was a big part of getting that defensier's license, right? Is that? And so it's very, very controlled through that way. My understanding is from the past.
Does anybody have any comment on that in terms of breeders that are business people?
Well, she has her dog school all over North America. I think one went to the UK.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, super reputable.
Okay.
And I know that she kept sending letters for a couple of years there. Can we please get a defensier's license in this community?
Counselor Caldwell, I don't know if this will answer your question or not. So you can breed your dog, and they can be very fancy and kind of certified and all that. I don't think having someone breed their male or female dogs would impact the community unless they were to keep all the puppies. And that's where the defensier's license would come into play, and also the amount of dogs at the residence, right? So I can't remember if we put an age on what a dog in the definition of what a dog is.
Three months.
Is it three months? So most puppies would leave, would be sold or whatever at three months, which would, you know, would give the exemption that you don't need to have that defensier's license and it wouldn't necessarily be a contravention of the amount of dogs at the residence, right?
But I do love the idea of a responsible person wanting to ensure that they have something like that in place just in case if someone wants to stay a little longer or something like that, right? But that's... We want to celebrate people like that.
And again, I don't know if it answered your question or not, but yes, you know, that's where the amount of dogs at the property would come, you know, the section would come into play. And then also your defensier's license, right? Because you're only allowed, under a defensier's license, you're only allowed to have, you know, three big dogs as opposed to two big dogs, or, you know, four little dogs as opposed to four big dogs, right?
Awesome, thank you.
Can I just ask a question of like, when it talks about the number of cats or the number of dogs that you're allowed to have, how does enforcement actually happen with that? Right? Like, is it like... Yeah, I guess I'm just curious. Like, we have the rules, right? But how do we actually enforce that?
It wouldn't be like a door-to-door... Sorry to answer your question, Mayor Montina. It wouldn't be like a proactive door-to-door, you know...
Campaign.
How many dogs can happen at this residence, right? It's usually found out, you know, as a, you know, a come across, right? We get a complaint of excessive barking and there's multiple dogs at the property. And so I would go and investigate the barking complaint. And, oh, hey, you actually have five dogs here. You're only allowed to have two, right? And then that's when you would enforce it, right? As you know.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I have one more question, and this is about the fines. Again, particularly looking at the one where if you have more, having a maximum number more than the maximum number. Is this per animal? So say that I had 10 cats or so, all right, 10 dogs. Would I be fined $150 for all the eight that I have that are over? Or is it just one penalty?
To answer your question, Mayor Montina, yes and no.
Okay.
So what that would mean, we call that stacking tickets. So you have 10 cats at your residence, and I just keep writing, right? It wouldn't be for every animal. It would be you have 10 cats, you're only allowed to have two. You are a contravention. This is your $150 fine for having more than one animal. Unless the bylaw were to state that.
Yeah, okay, excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one more question. This bylaw seems a lot more open-ended to me. Is that just to make it easier for enforcement? And then I guess was the previous bylaw more restrictive? That would become more unenforceable or too costly to enforce?
To answer your question, Counselor Ackerman, yes.
Okay.
On everything, yes, it's easier to enforce and it's more cost-effective for municipality.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions before we go through the actual bylaw document? If there's not, let's start on page one. And I'm going to just ask if anybody has any changes that they would like to see within page one. Roll through with page one. Moving on to page two. Go ahead.
I wonder if we should amend to include a definition for nuisance cats for the exact same reasons as nuisance dogs, minus the barking. I understand that when they're at large, it's harder to catch, but I still think that there are reasons that they're likely coming onto property. And I think that we should have a definition for that.
All right, so we have that proposal out there. I guess that I just have a question on that that I'm not sure who would answer this, but I noticed that more than nuisance dog, there was a lot more written about it as well. And I guess that how would we apply that? Like, would we just apply the same rules regarding that? Or would this be something that we'd have to look at that part because they are kind of dealt with differently? And I don't know, maybe you have thoughts on that, Counselor Florence, or CPO, or anyone on that as well?
I have a further amendment. Lower down to other section on nuisance cats.
Excellent, okay.
But I see there are recent discussion.
Yes, yeah, okay. That's great. Thoughts on that from everybody? So is this one that, because it kind of reflects later on, do we want to have more of a conversation when we get down there? We can pop back up to the top after?
I think that makes sense because if it's not captured in the bylaw, then we don't need to worry about the definition.
Excellent. Okay, I'm just going to have that up here so we can talk a little bit better. Is there anything else from page two? Nope, okay. Page three. Yes.
I got a couple of things. The easy one is 3.4. It says, after it says three at the bottom, it says months allowed to live on a property. So I think there is a missing word there. Maximum amount for cats, would they just three months allowed to live on a property? Possibly? That just felt a little bit weird when I was reading that. And then I got section 3.3, which is kind of tied in with section 3.15. So 3.3 talks about a limit of two dogs. And then when you go down to 3.15, it references a person wishing to keep more than three dogs can apply for a defensier's license. So I think if we're using two dogs as the number that we can use, then we should just update 3.15, just because there's a little bit of contradiction between the two.
Great. And break those into two? So the first one was just adding in the word two. Is everybody good with that? Yep, okay. And then the second one was what the two dogs versus three dogs. Thoughts on that from anybody? Is there any opposed to that?
I'm sorry. Yeah, they're very distinct differences though. So what we're saying is we're only allowing somebody with two dogs, and then they can get a defensier's license to have three dogs on their property.
Okay.
Is that... But it sounds as though that's a conversation that's happened so far. But yeah, 3.15 indicates that if they want to keep more than three dogs on the property, they have to apply for a defensier's license. And I've never heard of a dog defensier's license in another community that only allows for three dogs, right? Just by the very definition of what a dog defensier's license is. I'm not sure.
To answer or to speak to your question there, Counselor Caldwell, I think that's a typo. I think that was a typo.
Oh, okay.
On 3.15?
Yes, on the defensier's definition, yeah. I believe that was just a typo.
So it should say more than two?
Yes.
Okay.
So it says the person wishing to keep more than two. So in the past, we were allowed three dogs, and we've moved it down to two? Is that what the confusion is then?
I believe it's always been two, that I'm aware. This just should say more than two.
Yep.
Because that would prefer three.
Well, I only have two now, so I'm not going to argue the issue. It's always been two.
All right, so we're good to change, I'm just popping down to 3.15 right now. We're good to change this to two, to be reflective of that? Yes, anyone in opposition? None? Okay. Is there anything else on page four now?
Oh, sorry, I have more for page three.
Oh, you have more for page three, okay.
Yeah. So there's between 3.3 and 3.4. Actually, sorry, no. You answered that question. So, okay, this is one I wasn't exactly sure how to word. So for section 3.3 and 3.4, I move to direct administration to investigate animal rescues within the town of Coherst and their compatibility with the land use bylaw and provide information related to section 3.3 and 3.4 on incorporated animal rescues by, hopefully, the date of our next meeting, in which we hope to pass this before council makes a final decision on this bylaw.
Great, okay.
I apologize, but for clarity, we're requesting that they seek out information on incorporated animal rescues and how it would impact 3.3 and 3.4.
Yes, that's the motion.
All right, do you need that motion, we need that recorded? Is that correct?
So I guess I wasn't sure because I wanted to have the motion very clear so that if it wasn't agreed with, that then I could make amendments to it. So I have that motion written as that. One of the previous motions I had written was to amend to remove is an incorporated animal rescue. But I think that we need more information about the incorporation of the animal rescues in order to make a decision. And so that's why I landed on that. And I do have a rationale that I would like to share with council as well.
Sure, that's fine. What I would recommend is we do a recommended motion to council. And at council, that motion would be voted on at that point in time because we are not at second or third reading. Following the next meeting, if council proceeds with that motion, then we would do that research. And then from there, amendments would be made to the bylaw of fourth, third reading.
Great. So you're saying to do that at our council meeting?
Today's motions at committee of the bowl are a recommendation to council to make a motion.
Okay. So I would take that to a recommendation for a motion. Is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
Okay.
And then at the next meeting, then that motion will come forward.
Yeah.
And an official vote on motion would be made then. And then the timelines would... Let's see that.
However, we can still go through the process of the recommendation for a motion, right? Still voting on it today?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get that wording started?
I sent it to both of you, but it's not fully... Yeah.
Mayor Montina, we're going to take a quick recess.
Yeah, of course we can. Let's do that. Let's take a five-minute recess. Nobody was in that?
We did that, sure.
Let's do that. Let's go. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
It's supposed to end in a W, yes.
I move to recommend to council to direct administration to investigate animal rescues within the town of Culhurst and their compatibility with the land use bylaw and provide information related to section 3.3 and 3.4 on incorporated animal rescues by the date of the next council meeting, in which we hope to pass this before council makes a final decision. Is that okay?
Let's go to everyone to see if there's any questions on that. Does that make sense to everybody? Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Counselor Florence has made the motion. Would you please take it?
I would, thank you. I know that this has been kind of a hot topic lately. And so I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about this. So to me, being incorporated is quite an easy thing to do. It doesn't, it doesn't make it any more legitimate as an animal rescue, because there's no governing body such as like SPCA or something attached to it. Even being a terrible rescue, which would be federal and having status, would be a lot more legitimate than simply being incorporated. Aside from that, and I'll speak to this in further points, we have nothing in this bylaw about requirements for an animal rescue, health and safety guidelines being followed, or even controls like maximum number of animals allowed on the premises, ways to deal with animal waste, smell, and control somehow it looks on the outside. This bylaw speaks to ways of dealing with complaints for dogs and cats, but it isn't specific to animal rescues. And I'm certain that not everybody is going to be okay with a shelter popping up in their neighborhood. And I believe they should be given an opportunity to at least have their say before approval is given. In the land use bylaw, for example, when somebody wants to start a home-based business, there are steps to follow to ensure the business owner and the town are doing due diligence, to ensure that the rules are being followed and neighboring residents have an opportunity to share potential concerns. And then it's all taken into account, and then it is approved, which is part of the land use bylaw, which is good, is a system of accountability. Currently, there is no process in our land use bylaw or in this bylaw, from what I could find, to address the potential of having an animal rescue in a residential neighborhood. And I don't think that is equitable or fair, not to the neighbors that would be adjacent to it, to not have their opportunity to be heard, but also to be fair to all the home-based businesses in town who have gone through the rigorous process and the time it takes to do that. And yet, we're not applying the same process to everyone across the board. I know that when I had a licensed statement, which is kind of similar, there was again, there was a governing body attached and a higher authority. And with this, there is no governing body, it is simply self-determined. Again, we need to get more information about how this affects the land use bylaw and what requirement should be included here before we make a final decision with this point of incorporation. And I would suggest that we do that for the entirety of this thing as we go through this, is to be making sure in line with the land use bylaw. And then lastly, on the point of being incorporated, I wonder if this is in a point trying to throw a little bit of bylaw cover over what is already happening in town? And I don't think that's equitable at all. I think we could be running into issues where someone gets denied a fancier's license and has potential to get incorporated, which is self-determined, and then be able to get past that, and then our hands are tied because of this bylaw. And I really would wonder if council is okay with any person in any property in any part of town being able to start a self-determined animal rescue? Because for me, the answer is I am not okay with that. And so that's why I want to make the move to direct administration to investigate the animal rescues and the alignment with the land use bylaw before we make our final decision on this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody from council like to speak to us? If not, would you like to close?
You know, I will say that this is something that we have, on this term, we've been talking about for a while. And I think that it's a very tender subject. And I think that there's a lot of folks lining up both sides of this. And I think that, you know, council's role is policy and bylaw setting. And this is one way council can set the tone and the direction for the future of animals in Culhurst. And I know this isn't, you know, fun or easy to talk about, but just something that has to be done.
Great, thank you. Okay, so Counselor Florence moved to recommend to council, recommend to council to direct administration to investigate animal rescues within the town of Culhurst and their compatibility with the land use bylaw and provide information related to section 3.3 and 3.4 on incorporated animal rescues by the date of the next council meeting, in which we hope to pass this before council makes a final decision. All right, so that motion is going to go forward. I will call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, the motion is carried.
If I may, I apologize, I probably should have spoken to this earlier. I'm not sure that administration's role is to investigate animal rescues. I thought the goal was to investigate that whether an animal rescue within the town of Culhurst would be compatible with our land use bylaw. And as it's written now, there's an implication that they are to investigate the animal rescues within the community, as opposed to their compatibility with the bylaw, the land use bylaw. I apologize, I was busy looking up how to register as an animal rescue. I thought it was a really rigorous process.
All right, so the motion is carried as it is written. I'm not sure, is everybody okay with it as written? Like, I can see what you're saying, as everybody's now to investigate them. Is everybody okay with it still being voted in favor in court? Or is the intention where we are with this?
As it's only a recommendation to council, I feel like there's time for my
Okay.
in the final, as a council.
Yeah.
I don't, there's a issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary Montina, listening to the discussion and listening to Counselor Florence's comment, way I would interpret it, I see what Counselor Caldwell is saying, but I think the intention was, I want to put words in your mouth, Counselor Florence, but not to investigate anything existing, but just generically, generally, high-level, investigate whether animal rescues, as Counselor Caldwell stated, are compatible with the land use bylaw. So in, you know, which zones or districts, that kind of thing. Is that
Yes.
a fair understanding?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you, great for that. Okay. We're good to carry on then with the rest of the document? All right, we're going to move to, are we done with page three at that point then?
All right, I have to pull back. No, I'm sorry, I think I started on page four.
All right, good to move to page four? Counselor, do you have something?
Yeah, I'm on page four, I can answer, so.
Okay. So on page four of the document, any changes that I would like to see? Go ahead.
I have two. So I'm looking at 3.8. Talks about no animal, no owner, animal shall allow damage to property of their own, blah, blah, blah. Defecate. So I was, I was, I was wondering if we could add a clause outlining the expected cleanup times for damage or defecation of this. Like, owners must clean up their wastes or damage immediately within 24 hours.
Can you just, can you give a little more context, we're talking about their own property? Or like, a little bit more, please?
The, well, this is talking about not their own property, right?
Okay.
It's an owner, no owner shall allow damage to a property, blah, blah, blah. So basically, if someone's dog comes and poops on your lawn, it's like, no, you're not supposed to do that. But we're not saying, when do you have to fix it by? So if John goes, if someone comes and say, well, yeah, yeah, I'll fix it like next week or something, or whatever the damage was. No, the bylaw says you're supposed to fix that like within 24 hours. But it doesn't say, that's what I'm gathering.
All right, let's.
So like, in the event that an animal does engage in these behaviors, it's
Put a timeframe on when it's supposed to be remedied by.
Can we get some feedback maybe from police officer on that?
Yes, to give me feedback, Mary Montina. So like, defecation, I agree with what Counselor Wolfrey is saying. There should maybe be a defining time limit for defecation. But for, you know, like, like physical property, like say the dog is running at large and it runs up to your door and it jumps up on your screen door and it wrecks your screen door, that's like a civil matter, right? And so there would, you know, is how long the civil litigation would play out. But I agree, we could add, we could add something in there for like, you know, defecation or whatever, or waste of garbage, whatever, you know. If someone says, yeah, my neighbor's dog, I saw him, you know, dump, you know, spill my garbage all over the yard or got into my cans on my deck. You know, we could add, we could add maybe a timeframe. If they, if the property owner agrees for that individual to come onto their private property to clean up the mess, right? It all comes down to that. But if the intent was to just add all in one, you know, bylaw, right?
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go around to council. So we're considering the matter that Counselor Wolfrey has brought forward. Did you have a question or thought on that?
I just, I think it's almost worded right the way it is right now. Because when I say, no owner, sorry, no owner of an animal shall allow damage to a property of their own, like permitting them to defecate. So it's like saying, if they do that, they should be picking it up, right? Because if they leave it for any amount of time, that would be a contradiction of this. Right? So I think it's just kind of like inherently stated within it. Like, you're not allowed to allow your animal to do that. And since that happens, you're in contradiction. Right?
I think that we've been reading these things for three years. So we see what's inherent within them. I like the idea of a little more clarity. And I, maybe it might be a tool for our peace officer to be able to say, hey, you know what, can you please fix this, right? It's a simple matter to go and clean it up. Or provide restitution or something, right?
And that's my intent.
Kind of small-town approach to it, right?
And that's my intent more to, you know, I guess, yeah, you should clean it up immediately. But, you know, some people might say, well, I'm busy, I'm busy, whatever, right? And people would like to wiggle off this, well, the law says
Within 21 hours.
So you better go, come back tomorrow. That's.
But then the problem is, is if they don't, now how do we manage that, right? Because you always have to think about.
And then we get fractures or something, right? So.
To add commentary to, Mary Montina, the contravention is the act itself. So your dog just defecated on your neighbor's lawn and then ran away and is still there, you know, and you discover it. That's the contravention right here. The dog tipped over the garbage can, that's the contravention. It's not how long it takes to clean, the defecation or the waste, it's the act itself, excuse me.
Okay, that makes sense. Did you have anything you'd like to?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, I appreciate you clarifying that. Because I would disagree, I don't think there should be a timeline in it. Because I think it's, it's stating here that you should not allow whatever the animals to disturb the premises at all. So that you're not even supposed to be allowing your dog to poop there. But we do also, we have the other side of the bylaw. It also speaks to, you know, litter and there's fines for that. So I don't think a timeline needs to be taken up in this point. I have a different point on 3.8.
Okay, can we finish up with this one first?
Yeah.
And then we'll move to that. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just looking at the fine section for this 3.8 has damage to property is $150 fine. We could also have failure to remove defecation added to that, right? And then that would kind of incentivize that at the same time. I don't know if that's something people want to do, but that might be a way to.
For myself right now, I think that it's okay as written. I think that by adding in that extra, like, then there's additional things we also consider. And I'm not sure that it's, I'm not sure that that's helpful in a lot of ways, I guess, is the way that I'm looking at it. I think that it's kind of like all those other bylaws, we had how long that they were. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I'm just going to go around and see if people are in favor of that. And we'll see kind of where that lands. Are you in favor of changing and adding a timeline? Nope. Timeline? No, okay.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not bothered either way, I guess. I'm just, for me, it was just more about adding some clarity about, well, you know, maybe, maybe it could be, and owners shall remedy as soon as possible or something. I don't know. It is, when do we, are we expecting the owner to remedy those things, I guess? Is the question. Because that's the broader question, I guess, because it doesn't say they should remedy it.
Okay. Police officer, then we'll look at what's in there.
Mary Montina, if council wishes that, you know, owners be responsible for cleaning up after their animal defecates, we could add a completely new section, you know, and we can make it, you know, 3.8.1, say something like, any owner who fails to clean up after their dog defecates is in a contravention of the bylaw. Something like that, make a completely new section to add to 3.8 if council wishes, or if we really want to have that time limit, to have its own contravention.
Okay.
Great, can I ask, and if we were to do that? Great, can I ask, and if we were to do that, would we then be able to make it, so, any property outside of, on any property within the news value of holders, outside of the home or the dog owner's property?
Does it need an authorization?
If they haven't, um, if they've been, they're remediated, whatever the terminology is.
I'm sorry, Counselor Caldwell was your question?
Well, could we then just, if we did a 3.8.1, could it then just be across the board, any property that is not the dog owner's property, if a dog defecates, you have a responsibility to clean immediately or be subject to a fine?
Yes, that, that's correct.
Yeah.
That, that would be, that would be section 3.8 right now.
Perfect, okay.
Administration's gonna wordsmith that again, so a little bit?
What?
Because we're not gonna, are we gonna help with that?
Because, because we have to assume that if a dog is what being walked on leash, they're not far onto the owner's property, right? They're not, you know, they're not up in the plow beds or up on their deck, you know what I mean? Like, they're by the sidewalk, if they get on there to defecate. And that would also include our, our new off-leash dog part, right?
So can I just, before we get to onto that, can you give feedback on the original of adding that time? Are you in favor of that or not?
No.
Are you in favor, we're gonna go back this way now, are you in favor of considering another clause in here about cleaning up your poop?
You know, I, I don't think it's necessary just because of the, the, in the, in the unsightly bylaw, there's a littering thing. And in the definition for refuse, it includes, like, this. So I, I think that's already covered, and I think, I think that's a given. But I also think that we're saying, you're not allowed to have any dogs, or, you know, you're not allowed to have your animal on this property, but, you know, here's a clause, like, you're not allowed to have the dogs on the property. Don't let them defecate on the property, like, it's cat and dry to me. There doesn't need to be a timeline for removal. It doesn't talk about urinating, because I think that's probably much harder to probably control and police, and, you know, happens much more frequently, because, you know, dogs all of a sudden just, just do their thing. When it comes to defecating, it can be controlled a little bit more, you can get the animal off of the property, and, like, there's no, no reason for it to even ever end up there in the first place, in my opinion.
Great, thank you. Can we go back this way then? Counselor Poltrier, how are you feeling about something like this?
Yeah, I, I like having it there, I think I reworded it subtly, but yeah, I think the general intent is, if you, it's just, it's just about, so, residents know what to expect, so if they go to their neighbor and they say, yeah, you're not cleaning up my property, oh, sorry, I love that, clean up for me, no, no, you're supposed to clean it up, like, you're supposed to take care of your dog, and, I mean, yeah. All these bylaws are about the neighbors, so. But, but I just think it's clear, like, and especially if they damaged your property, you know, are they responsible to fix it or not, is the ambiguity that, you know, understanding now as they read through this, it's, yeah, you're not, you're not allowed to do that. Now you've been fined for doing it, are you responsible to remedy that, I guess? Is, is, is the, my dog knocked over your fence, broke it, I got my fine, $150, go on to again. But now that owner's supposed to fix that fence or whatever, it wants, right? So that, that's, that's the part that I like, now that we've talked about it more, so.
So you're, you're liking the way this is looking, but maybe it's wordsmithed a bit?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Caldwell, how are you feeling about this?
I like this as well, because I think, leaving it broad like that, it's on property, not their own. We've identified that people can walk their dogs around the town, we're gonna have an off-leash dog park, and so this doesn't specifically say, it doesn't contradict what said earlier in terms of not allowing a dog to walk on private property, not their own. It doesn't contradict that, but the implication is, is there. And it's a great tool, I love tools, I love simple tools, right? A parent can show that to their kids and say, look, this is the law, right? The neighbor can show it to his neighbor and say, look, this is the law, right? Instead of digging through the inferences, which bylaws often are. You know, if we leave it under unsightly, so then it's about, you know, littering, you know, and then finding it somewhere in there.
Deputy Mayor?
Feels really redundant to me, so like Counselor Florence, I'd rather see it removed. If it does say, I would recommend not just having it as dog, but animal, because some people let their cats roam, have cats also. Be a long wrong for neighbors to pick up.
Well, that's a good point.
I'm just, I just wanted to ask peace officer about that, so if we were to change it to animal rather than dog, does that cause any, does there any implications to that?
To answer your question, Mayor Montina, I, I would, I would have it as animal as well.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm in support of this, I think, like, I think that it, well, it's implied that you shouldn't do that. I think that it, like, like you said, it's a great tool to say, like, you have to clean up after them, right? And I know that we've seen a lot of this around town. And so I, I like, I like it in there, and I actually think that the wording is, is okay for me. And so, like, with that, I just wanna go, if, if we were to leave it like this, I know Counselor Poltrier, you didn't, you wanted the wording changed?
I think it's hard to broaden it basically to, you know, to say, you know, yeah, and then, or maybe it's 3.20.2 or something about, maybe so we have one about defecation and one about damage, and the owner's responsible to remedy that as soon as they can or something.
But is, is that not then a civil? Doesn't that become a civil issue?
Yeah.
So we can find it, but then the neighbor can charge the other neighbor in the civil matter to repair it, right? I don't know that we can jump in the middle of that. Is that our job?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
Could, could, could you, could you just, could you put that in there potentially, so that's clear to people saying?
To answer your question, Counselor Poltrier, I, I think we should stay away from legal counsel in our bylaws, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, let's just do a little, a little vote on this, just to see, because I know we're kind of on a couple of different pages here. So, 3.8.1, who is in favor of including 3.8.1? Okay?
Yeah, I'm in favor, I just, I think I, I think we should change the word who permits and just say, any animal, any owner whose animal, animal defecates on property not their own.
Oh, yeah.
So we're not saying, like, whether they permitted it or not, it's just if you happen to do it.
Yeah, you're right, I've seen little kids drag their dogs off of my lawn, and they're pooping up the sidewalk as they're dragging them away. And the child would argue and say, I didn't permit him to do that.
If, if I may, Mayor, Mayor Montina, I wouldn't, I wouldn't write it that way. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, we want it to be a timeframe, a definitive section. So we already have established that you cannot allow your animal to cause damage to another property, damage in regards to defecation. Now, that's one contravention, now 3.8.1 is now, any owner who fails to clean up immediately after the defecation should be how it's written, because we're not going to, to clean it up immediately, right? So we've already established that you can't let them defecate.
Yeah.
Now, the second, the, the new contravention is failing to clean it up, right? And that's, that's how I would wordsmith it.
So can you give some suggestions on how, like, what that should actually say, so we can write that down?
You did say it really well.
The thing is, is like, like, Derry and I, we, we go through, we wordsmith, you know, for an hour to say the simplest sentence, right? So to, to pull it out of my hat right now is, will take some time, but, but yeah, something like, any owner who fails to clean up after their animal who defecates on property not their own is in contravention of the bylaw, something like that.
So, yeah, so any owner who does not immediately clean up after their animal, I just had.
Is in contravention?
Yeah, if they, if they fail to. Right? After their animal.
Like, after their animal defecates? Is in contravention?
Yes, in contravention of this bylaw, and will be subject to fines.
Mean another fine?
This is a different, this is a different take on it now, I think. From a timeframe, now we're adding another, another fine.
But they are gonna be fined, if they, if they contrary in this bylaw, they're gonna be fined, right? If they clean it up immediately, well, then the chances of them being fined are pretty nil, you know what I mean? It's a way to, to not be fined.
So, section 3.8, that's one, that's one bylaw contravention. Section 2.8.1 is the second contravention, right? So you, you're walking your dog down the sidewalk, it defecates on someone's lawn, and you just keep walking, that's now your contravention of two bylaws, two sections of this bylaw.
I think that opens it up to even more danger, because, because I guess, because I think, I mean, I, I think everyone's okay, oh, yeah, like, they're, we cleaned it up right away. Like, that seems okay to me. I don't, I wouldn't want a fine twice, just because. Exactly.
Yeah, the goal is not to, you know, the goal is not revenue, the goal is for them to clean their down, up after their damn dogs, right? So that's the hope, is that we can manage that behavior. It doesn't look great, but it, it, you guys could do your magic wordsmithing.
Alright, I'm gonna ask counsel then, do we want to have something to this sentiment? I know that it's changed now from what it originally started out. And looking at this now with, with the advice that we received from our peace officer, is this the path that we want to go down, or are we, like, making this harder again? I guess I'm curious where everybody's standing with this, if we want this in there, or if we want to just go with the implied, pick up your poop, or where, where everyone's at with that. So maybe I'll just, I'll start again with Counselor Florence, I know you voiced your thought before, but if there are change, go ahead.
My thoughts have not changed, I don't think this needs to be in here.
Okay. Counselor Poltrier?
I, I, I think, yeah, I still like some kind of timeframe, and I don't know, maybe, maybe it doesn't need to be a separate one, maybe it's just an add-on at the end of 3.20 that says, I don't know, yeah, but that is like.
Well, the timeframe there is immediately. I mean, that's what a responsible person does, you got poops and you pull up the little bag and you clean it up immediately. Lots of people in town don't.
If you permit them to do it. Yeah, I don't know, maybe, yeah, maybe it is getting more complicated to add it in, but I still like having some kind of timeframe. I, I, I think it needs more time, wordsmithing.
Great.
I, I like it, I know that these guys are gonna wordsmith it, but I like, I like the sentiment attached to this, because then it does stay consistent. It, it says, it stays consistent with the previous bylaw, right? I like the consistency, even though it's not as pretty as our last one. You guys don't make it that way.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm with Counselor Florence, I'd like to see it. Just food for thought, there is no fine associated with not cleaning up after your dog unless you're looking at it that are gonna be fined, which is not a part of this bylaw.
I, I think there is, isn't there, unsightly, if, if a person litters, is there not a fine if someone litters in?
For littering, yes, but not, not within this bylaw.
Yeah, but dog feces, but dog feces are identified as litter.
Sorry, print water. There, at this point, no new information is being brought in. We are going nowhere in this discussion, we have a lot to get through tonight. So I would move to limit debate right now.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I am going to call the question, if, if you are, if you are in favor of, of including this, please vote for that, if you're not, don't vote.
You have to go on print water.
I, I, I agree with you, there you go. Alright, okay, so, so with that, I'm going to ask, who would like to keep this clause within? Please vote on section 3.8.1 if you'd like to keep it in. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is? The other one. Defeated. I never see defeated very often, I never heard it, okay. So thank you for that, that conversation. We're gonna just keep moving on then. Counselor Florence, I think you had something for this section as well, that you wanted to bring forth with 3.20?
Thank you. It's, do we, below 3.8, amend to add a point to have a control mechanism for homeowners to deal with nuisance animals on their presence, on their premises, sorry. So I guess, I forgot to ask this question earlier, but, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of ways for people to, to deal with nuisance animals on their premises, and so, does it need to be included here? And that's, sorry, if I could just to ask that question to the mayor, to the community, who's up there? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor.
To Mayor Montina to answer Counselor Caldwell, uh, Florence's question, the definition of a nuisance animal, it's, it's a, it's, it's kind of the same, it's a classification, we would, we would class like a nuisance dog, just like we would like an aggressive or a vicious dog, it's, it's just, it's a different classification. For example, this, you know, we have a dog in town that's constantly running at large, it's constantly getting into garbage, it's just a nuisance, so we would classify this animal as a nuisance dog, and therefore it would have conditions similar to what a vicious dog would have, or an aggressive dog would have. You know, making the owner more responsible for that animal. It's not a, it's not a vicious dog, it's not an aggressive dog, it's a nuisance dog, because Fido is constantly jumping the fence, it's, you know, running around all over town all the time, but it's not necessarily, you know, a threat, it's just a nuisance. That's what that definition's for. For this bylaw.
Yeah, that, that actually made a lot of sense, thank you, and so basically, like, the whole section under nuisance animals is the control for people being able to call an enforcement when, when they are, so it doesn't need to be included as an extra point here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, then I will not make that amendment.
Great. Is there anything else for this page, or just page four? Yes?
Just a question with regards to dog fanciers licenses, do we want to have a maximum number of dogs? There's none listed there, but thirteen, or 3.15, I see, talks about the third dog not being used for breeding, but there is no maximum stated. It just talks about keeping more than the two dogs. I don't know how everyone feels, but I would, I would like to see more than possibly four, I think that's a handful. If it was just three, I'd be already offended, but.
Can I ask, peace officer, first, some advice on this, and thoughts or what you see?
Yeah, so, my mind immediately goes to the grandma that has five Pomeranians. They're not big dogs, they're tiny little purse dogs. She just moves, she just moved to a duplex here in town. She's had her dogs for the past five years. Are we now gonna make her get rid of her family members? Are we gonna limit her, so you can only have four out of five of your Pomeranians? That's where my mind goes with that. The fanc, you know, with that being said, the fanciers license would be, you know, you, you have two dogs, two labs, and now you want to get four more German Shepherds. Obviously, we're not gonna allow that at one residence in the house, right? So, that's, that's where my mind goes.
So then, can I ask, like, with this, because we're not really talking about, like, the size of dog, right? Or the, the breed of dog? How would we, so someone were to apply for a fanciers license, and, you know, they have the five Pomeranians or whatever, but say I apply for one and I have five labs, is there a potential that I would be denied because of the size of my dogs, or like, how is that determined, I guess?
I guess it would go through the discretion of, of the peace officer, or, or the CEO, the impact it would have on the neighborhood.
Okay.
You, you, when you apply for a fanciers license, you actually have to go door to door, up and down your neighborhood, asking for written permission from your neighbors. And it's, it's, it's customizable, like, it's different for each license, right?
Yeah, okay. Great. That makes sense, thank you. Alright, so you've proposed limiting it?
Yeah, I'm just looking at that, if, like, here you have that information, and, like, I don't want to limit it, but I just think that we should update point C, where it talks about the third dog is not used for breeding, just because that specifically adds a quantity to it, and if we're not limiting the quantity, then I think we should just update the revision. What would you suggest we would add? Additional animals, or then additional dogs?
Okay.
Additional, racketeers? Right? Additional?
Okay.
Or whatever. Do you have the additional dogs? Yeah.
Dog?
You could put that as in brackets, so it could be additional dog or dogs.
Okay.
I think.
Okay.
Shall, shall not be used?
Yes, I guess so. All right, so, uh, Deputy Mayor has, um, indicated he would like to have this amendment. Is anybody opposed to this? No opposition? Great. All right, let's move on then. We're good with that. Um, we're moving on to page five. Any意见on page five? Do you have something, Counselor Patricia?
I do.
Okay, great.
Uh, so I was wondering if, um, I don't know, an aggressive dog would be happy about. Uh, do, do we, can, can we, or, I'm wondering about the possibility of having a requirement for behavioral reassessments or something like that. If you, you know, if it was a bad dog and you trained it to be a good dog, could, could that, um, be a factor, I guess, some kind of improvement or training or rehabilitation? Uh, could be lifted potentially if they did obedience training?
To answer your question, Counselor poetry, um, I believe that is in the current dog control bylaw. Um, the council, it's actually called a dog council, dog control council. Could do that. But it's not, this one I don't, I don't, I, I, I got rid of that specifically because it's hard to curtail forces of people. Do we want to have a special council meeting every time someone wants to re-designate their dog? Where we could just get the C O to sign off on that, right? Or they could come to a regular council meeting and petition, right, with a letter to council? Okay.
May I ask then? So if a dog, um, if they come in to, right, because they have to register, it was an aggressive dog every year, if they come in to register and they bring in paperwork that shows obedience training or behavior management stuff, would, would that then be sort of the kickoff? That information's provided to them and then that's sort of the kickoff to say, okay, what are our next steps? To see if we can lower this designation for your dog?
To answer your question, um, Counselor Paula, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I've never rescinded a dangerous dog or a aggressive dog, um, condition before. Um, it's to protect the community, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Um, so, so that would be a, that would be a liability that, that council would have to undertake if they wanted to do that. Yeah.
All right, um, go ahead. Did you have, did you have a question regarding this?
Not on this one, but when we've, when we've moved past this one, I have.
Sure, so let's, so, um, how are you feeling about, so you're, you're indicating that you'd like to have something whereby like they can be deemed as good consumption?
It, it just sounds, it just sounds like, yeah, you become aggressive dog, you're now an aggressive dog for the rest of your life.
They're not rehabilitating it.
They're not rehabilitating it. It just sounds, sounds sad to me, like.
Yeah.
What if he was just a bad dog because there was a cat?
It was a bad owner.
Bad owner.
I think, I think there's a number of offenses that have to occur, I think, I believe, to, in order to be designated.
So, I don't know, so maybe, so maybe it's not a huge issue, but that was just my thought. The other one wasn't, yeah, just some kind of level of compassion, I guess, that we can offer if they didn't certify that they were reformed dogs.
Reformed dogs.
Well, one, it's only for the town holders. Um, so as soon as they leave the community, their, their conditions are no longer, like, because we can't control what people do in Irish County. And I, I don't think we need to have it in the bylaw for, um, for council to, you know, uh, suspend that, that, that condition.
And, and, and I know both council has to, but it sounded like.
Council or the C O, like the C O can make that decision. You know, we, again, like, that's a liability that, that I, I don't really want to, uh, I think, I think I won't put any, uh, anyone in, especially the town, right? Uh, it's a liability. When we, when we deem a dog aggressive or, or whatever, it's, it's for the, it's for the safety of the community, right? Because it has done something so, you know, so bad. It bit someone or, or, you know, whatever. It doesn't call for, or the animal to go straight to Dangerous Dog Act, which is a provincial act. But if we don't, we wanna protect the community from this dog, it's still a lot of animals to, to live, thrive at home. So I don't know if we want, you know, like, if we could, if we want to, to do that, if that's something council wants to, to take in, right? If the conditions of the animal aren't, uh, they're not, I don't think they're unreasonable. They're not in a, you know, two by two cage with a muzzle for the rest of its life. It's, it's, right?
Okay, so I just, with this, I just want to see, okay. Um, so Counselor poetry has suggested that we want to include something about reformed dogs.
Yeah.
Um, is, would anybody, I would like to see who would like to go down the path or who thinks that we need to include that? We've gotten some advice from our, our peace officer on this. Um, who would be in favor of pursuing some clause about reformed dogs who are now?
Isn't, isn't four point one C essentially them? Like, I can't, I can't think the C O would just say, hey, Joe, you're a great guy. Let's just say your dog is okay. Like, you would have to, you know, you'd have to bring good paperwork and say, this is the work that's been done, right?
That's the decision maker.
So that's all good? Does that satisfy what you were looking for by having this in four point one C?
It's, I think it's slightly different, I guess, but I, I think it does.
Great, thank you. All right, Counselor Paul, I know that you had something in on this page.
I did, four point three. I think, I'm just trying to think to the time when we have our off-leash dog park. Um, but I, I think it's really important that, um, that dog not be walked in areas, even if it's on leash, under the control of a responsible adult. If it's being walked in areas that are populated by either, uh, a number of people or dogs, that kind of increases the risk. So I wonder if there's something in there that can sort of be added to that effect. Um, I also know the number of people that go into, um, off-leash dog parks in the city of Lethbridge after hours in the dark to bring their dogs that are aggressive to run them. And it's not an organized thing and there's been conflicts with other people and dogs that, that come at that time because it's cool or whatever their reasoning is, right? And so, you know, if we have something specific, and when we get that off-leash dog park, maybe we can, you know, designate times or something people can register to have times to let their dogs run with. You know, so, so that we can avoid that concern they have in the city. But, but as far as, um, yeah, as far as four point three, I really think there just has to be a statement in there. It doesn't really identify where they can walk them. So they're gonna walk, I'm gonna walk them down to the post office where there's a whole bunch of people, right? Because the bylaw says I can. And as long as I leave my responsible adult hanging on to them. Like, if a dog is lunging, if they're in a situation, there's lots of stimulus, and they're a reactive aggr- aggressive dog, I, I don't think that's marked with, by that environment, but I don't know if our C P O would have any other thoughts on that? If there's something that says, you know, to really avoid those heavily populated areas?
Uh, to, to speak to your, to speak to your, your question, Counselor Paula, I think that would be a redundant condition. Leashes are there to control your animal. The same things that you had described could happen on any sidewalk, on any street in town, right? So you can take your dog to the dog park. You can bark and all that, but you have it under control. I don't see, I don't see why that would be a.
I, I, I would have to respectfully disagree with you and say that if you bring your dog into a dog park, there's an expectation that other dogs are gonna try to socialize with it and they're gonna come running up and come to play with you. And if you're an aggressive dog, Facebook is going to be filled with really angry people that allowed an aggressive dog in the dog park. Right? I just, that's just my.
But what an aggressive dog, that has to be leased, be allowed in off-leash dog park?
Uh, well, we don't have anything that says they're not. It says they can be walked anywhere in the community as long as they're on a leash.
So they wouldn't be walked at the off-leash dog park?
Well, you can. You can bring it, uh, uh, you can bring a dog on leash into an off-leash dog park. People do it. People do it in the city of Lethbridge. And then they get angry that other dogs come up to play with their super reactive dogs, right?
Problems, yeah.
And it causes problems. And so I'm just trying to think of, you know, good, good fences make good neighbors. Good bylaws make, mitigate problems before they become problems.
I would actually like to see that included in there, just be, basically be able to not allow it at the dog park. Unless, like, otherwise stipulated, like, like, like you said. But I think that that would be something that we would potentially determine down the road. But it would be nice if there was just a statement that, like, these dogs are not allowed at the dog park. And that's just, that's my feeling on that. Um, just because I do agree with you. I think that when you go to the dog park, it's the assumption that everyone's gonna do whatever they're gonna do, right? Um, and even if they are in there with a leash, you're under the assumption that your dog is gonna save its place as well. Um, so, so I, I would like to see that, and so I do agree with that. How do others feel about something, um, to that effect? Is anybody, um, a- opposed to that?
Can I, can I go to block, when we get that built in place, I would love to have a conversation about people being able to register times and even if it's just in a small dog area to run around. And maybe some of that will help to condition the dogs to become less reactive, right? But that's a conversation in the future, right?
All right, so we've got aggressive dogs not permitted in, um, should be in the off-leash.
Dog, could you put any?
In any?
Just in cases. If this one went down the road, then.
Any off-leash dog parks?
Looking for town coal first.
Well, this, this report first is town coal first, so I don't think we let it there, right? Okay, okay. Um, is everybody in agreement with this or is anybody opposed to it? All good? Okay. Um, we'll move on. Does anybody else have anything for this page? Uh, Counselor Florence, did you have something? We'll go to you first, then we'll go to Counselor poetry after.
Uh, thank you. Um, so that we add section five, after section five, something about, um, nuisance cats or other animals, um, but cats are nuisance too. Um, and, and there should be a, a control for repeat offenders. If we're doing it for dogs, we should, we should also do it for cats. Um, I think if it was something for bunnies, we would do it too, but it's just, it's an omission of our community. Um, so I think that it should follow the same, the same format as, um, section five point one, points B through E. Um, and then just changing it to a cat. So, uh, section, uh, B is about their repeated, um, noise from a cat. About not cleaning up their, their dog feces on another person's property, um, or their cat feces, sorry. And then, um, letting your cat run into other people's property. And then people have complained numerous times about it.
Mayor Montana, to, to simplify that, instead of making it nuisance dog, why don't we just change the whole word into nuisance animal?
Thoughts on that for everybody? If it was nuisance animal?
Uh, I, I certainly understand the concern with the cats, but, um, uh, as your C P O said, like, to force them out is just difficult, so, um, while I respect the intent of it, I don't know that it's enforceable, I guess, is. Is, is, so I, I, I disagree that it should just be a dog, I guess.
Um, others? Uh, go ahead.
I like the idea of adding cats to this. I think that it's important because, um, you have responsible pet owners and you have less responsible pet owners. And I don't think that somebody's quality of life on their property should be affected by somebody that's a less responsible pet owner. And I think that it might be a little bit more tricky to enforce with cats. And I understand that. But at the same time, if there's major issues from a property and if they're getting complaints, it's one way for the residents to actually try and deal with that. Because if we didn't have any homeless cats in there, it's like, well, sorry, you're rid of luck, right? And there's nothing they can do. So I'd rather see something there, even if it's a little bit more tricky to enforce, just to give those residents that opportunity to try and deal with things appropriately.
Counselor Paul, what are your thoughts?
I guess I've always looked at bylaws to see how enforceable is it? I mean, I, I would like to see something about nuisance cats, but I, 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 I have to be honest. Many of them look so similar to me that I wouldn't be able to determine one from the other if it's a nuisance one. Did I just say that out loud? You know, dogs might bylaw on this cat that's yapping at nighttime and they're sure it's a neighbor's cat, but it may not be. It might be one wandering about sitting on the fence yelling, like, how do we, like, I guess, how do we enforce it? You know, dogs tend to not run around and go in a neighbor's yard somewhere at nighttime and cause a bunch of a, a ruckus. You can usually identify what yard they're at, right? I, I just, it's, it would be tough to enforce in my mind. And I, I wonder if it's going to just create problems or people are going to have an expectation and, um, put a lot of pressure on us to, you know, sort of take care of problems that we really can't identify which one is. I, yeah, no, I'm, I guess I'm not.
I'm a little curious also, how do you?
So, to, to speak to, to that, um, mayor, to add to what, um, Deputy Mayor said, no bylaw is not enforceable. How it's enforced and the semantics of that are, are left to, to my department. So, yes, you know, uh, what Counselor Florence says, it, it all can be enforced. And anytime we create bylaws, um, it is good to have, um, as many tools and as many bullets in your bag, um, at your disposal, right? I would, i- instead of adding, just, you know, cast everything, I would say we should just add, you know, make the nuisance dog designation nuisance animal. Um, and then just change everything to animal, because animal speaks to everything. Everything, right? Um, and then it, it makes things, makes things easier. And, and how it's enforced and the semantics of that are, you know, is something I'll just have to figure out.
Do we, do we need to change some of the language within then, this then, if I may, to, to sort of say, you know, the animal has been identified or the identified animal? There's something to say. I think that would be the distinct difference then. You have to be able to identify that this is the cat that is being the nuisance.
So can you, tell, tell me more about that. I'm not trying to follow away what you're saying.
So, okay, so, so if a, if a, if a cat is making howling and hissing and everything and it's one o'clock in the morning, it's keeping them awake and somebody's calling bylaw and saying, my neighbor's cat is bloody well keeping me up. Right? I can hear it out there. But we don't know if it's a neighbor's cat or it's a cat from up the street or from two miles away. We don't know whose cat it is. If someone calls bylaw and says, the neighbor's dog was out in their backyard. I could hear them howling all night through my bedroom window. You're pretty sure that that's the neighbor's dog, because they don't like climb fences.
Yes.
Right? Um, you know, if, uh, yeah, just certain things like that, I think it's really gonna be hard to identify. And I hate for, for people to think, well, we have this bylaw, so get on it. And so I think if we just have language in there that just sort of somehow implies that we have to be able to identify the correct animal first in some manner.
So, so.
Um, it's easy to say we can identify a dog based on occasion.
To add to what you're saying, Counselor Paula, um, any element of any charge starts with identity, right? Sometimes, you know, you can have all the other elements, right, all the other evidence? And then you need to have identity. So, so I, I, I think we don't need to, to put that in there, because if I don't know whose cat it is, right, I can't, I can't. Sure, I can label that cat nuisance, but then, you know, I mean, who do we put the conditions on, right? So it's already there. It's, it's, that's, any, that's an any, any charge, any, anything.
You know, I'm just trying to make your job easier, but if you feel like you can handle it as is, I, I'll, I will bow down to your wisdom.
And it goes on, like, and it comes back to like investigation and do better and, and everything else, right?
Yeah.
Um, how to figure out, how to, how to, to, to enforce those, those conditions, right? It, it falls to how I do that, right? This is like, it's, it's just like, uh, it's speeding. It falls to how I do that, right? This is like, it's, it's just like, uh, speeding, right? How do we enforce speeding in town, right? Patrols, radar, speed traps, everything else, right? It falls in the same thing, right?
Uh, Councilor Potry?
Well, I do think it's, well, I think our CPO is very, um, capable of enforcing it. I, I, I think we should have spending time on, uh, enforcing things that have a larger impact on our community. Um, like, for, for example, for dogs, I mean, they can do much more damage than a cat. Um, or traffic, or other things, right? So for me, it's about priorities. And I know, and I'm like, well, you know, cats are small animals, and they can do small things. It's, I think it's a minimal impact that's not worth part of it, basically.
And that's you have an infant in the house all night.
Uh, Councilor Florence?
Thank you. Um, uh, yeah, so, um, uh, sorry. Just in regards to the, the comments about enforceability, I think, I think having it in, in this bylaw, it's, it's a little bit about enforceability, but it's also about people being able to find the rules and know what they are, and stay informed about them. Um, we have lots of rules in here, but it doesn't mean that John is writing 800 tickets a day, you know, at, at every given thing. It doesn't mean that it automatically makes everything enforceable, and tomorrow, cat owners and culvers are gonna be getting tickets. It, it's, it's a control. Um, and so, and it's a control because, again, cats are a nuisance. Them coming into, into my yard, being on the deck, you know, disturbing the dog, walking over the vehicles, it, it causes damage, it's, it's a nuisance. Um, you know, and also, I think that one of the other things that this would do is it would, it recognizes the impact that taking complaints has on staff time. And so it can point people towards, um, a bylaw where it is clearly written the expectations for themselves and, and for their neighbors. And so I think having it written in there, um, gives us a tiny bit of enforceability, which, I mean, these things are hard to enforce anyway, as we've talked about, but really, it, it's a, it's a control mechanism, and it, it's, we're stating the rules. We're stating the level of expectation for animals. And the level of expectation for animals is, we don't want, you know, nuisance animals in, in people's yards. You know, if we have nuisance animals, we're gonna label them, things like that, right?
And I, and I, sorry, I, I agree with, um, Councilor Florence's statements on that. I, and I probably should have made clear that I believe that we should have something on nuisance cats. I just thought that it might not just fit into this as an overall. I thought that it had to be, it would have to sort of be its own specific type of thing. That things that were really, that really are well enforceable with them. And it, and there is a complexity to it that is, is a little more than the dogs, right? But for now, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so can I ask, and I know that you had a little bit of a different idea at the beginning on how to change it. Are you open to the idea of nuisance animals as a, as a goal?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's great. However, that can be captured, and I, and I appreciate the, the input from Mr. Stotler.
Great. Okay, so that's what we're proposing right now, is changing this to nuisance animals. Obviously, I think what that would be, like, you know, including meowing or other noises too, like, like making it more generic, um, however one does that. Um, but I would like to see, is anybody in opposition to this? Okay, so if, if to, so then we're gonna, we'll just do an official vote, I know that we've kind of already done it, but, um, so Councilor Florence has put this forward for nuisance animals. Um, all those in favor of going to the nuisance animals rather than just dogs, um, uh, all those in favor? That is carried, um, so we will move forward with that change there as well. Yes?
Can I just add to then, um, change the definition as well?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
So then that would be something, um, that would go along with that?
Um, yeah, if we could just get it into, kind of just go over the coverage with the revisions and just tweak anything that needs to be tweaked with regards to the language on dogs and patients or whatever.
Great. And so then, again, so if we're changing this to nuisance animals, we would be updating the definition, just to be in line with that?
And the thighs.
And the thighs as well, yes.
Possibly.
Okay, so we would just need to make sure that it is all aligned together. Great. Everyone's okay with that? So we've now voted to say that we wanted to do nuisance animals. That means that there might be some other slight changes to the bylaws to ensure that it all adds up. Okay? Um, anything else from page five? Uh, Councilor Potry?
So for the 4.5, um, what is the requirement for insurance? Is true dog being the bottom up?
Maybe we'll, we'll ask you.
You're right. To answer, uh, Councilor Potry's question, Mayor Montina, most, I think most of office insurance and rancher's insurance, um, covers dogs or hounds in policies. So that would be the, that would be the standard. Does it have some sort of, the one near house or, or rancher's insurance? Which is divided a million dollars in coverage, right?
To shoot.
Carlina, is that, is there anything else that you'd like to add? Because I know that it does say something that needs to be provided to the CAO. Um, just in terms of the liability insurance that you would be looking for?
4.6, 5, 4.5.
4.5, yeah.
Um, at this time, I don't have an answer. I have to look into that.
Okay. Okay.
I would just like to make it clear, I guess, what, so it's level clear for everybody. If you have, if you have a nuisance animal, you need this much insurance. I don't know if that's, or maybe that's wrong, maybe we can't, because, I don't know, maybe this is legal reason we can't, but, but like, I just, I just thought to make it clear and, and fair, that's all.
I guess the way that I'm reading this is that it's, it's kind of situation dependent. Um, like, I'm kind of looking at this, like, in a form satisfactory to the CAO. So I'm kind of assuming that they're working on whatever that case is, and ensuring that, that that is, they have it, according to your discretion. I don't know if I'm wrong in that assumption, but that's, that's the way I'm reading this. Um, so, because I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what threshold we would, we would want, right?
If it's, yeah, okay, fair enough.
But that's just my thought anyways.
I just, when I, when I see everything, there's things like that, like, to the satisfaction of CAO brings back kind of memories of other things that are in discretion of the CAO. And the discretion is not agreed.
And the comma on that can just written.
So, would anybody like to see, like, you proposed actually having something there. Would anybody like to see it be more clear? Yes?
That was actually mine, too. And, um, what we're saying to them is that either the CAO or a designate that has been, um, that is providing the coverage. Um, so we don't necessarily have to have the approval of the CAO. So they can do, like, homeowner's insurance and insure their cats and dogs and stuff like that. And the, um, the third party designate says, oh, yeah, no, that'll be fine. They don't have to, you know, they don't have to share. They don't have to come to the TAO and say, uh, do, do you find this appropriate based on, um, you know, based on your designation as an aggressive dog? So it has to be clear. It has to have some kind of clarity around it, that it has to be. And, and I don't know what that clarity is, but I don't think we should say that a third party designate that is providing that liability insurance. Well, unless we say reputable, I, I don't know how you fix it, but.
The, the way that I'm reading this is that it's the CAO or designate for designate.
Comma.
Comma. And then they're providing, like, the company is providing the third-party liability coverage.
Okay, did that comma just go in there? Okay, thank you. That enhances the.
Very essence of grammar.
Okay.
Isn't it amazing what that simple word will do?
A comma will do, yeah.
Does that help with the clarification?
Absolutely, thank you. They just made it the way it was supposed to be written.
Does everybody, is everybody okay with that, that change? Yes. Um, Councilor Potry, does this kind of satisfy what you were talking about?
Uh, well, I, I would, I would be curious still what is, and I don't know if this is going in the bylaw, if it should go in the bylaw, but I'd be curious as to what we normally require.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I think when we have things like this, that's the beauty of having a, um, you know, people can just call. Like, we have that kind of a, um, reputation here, that people can call and get answers in the office now, right? And so they would just say, I'm not sure what that means. What, what do I do? And they say, well, you put it in your renter's insurance or your homeowner's, you're like, right?
So I don't know.
Rather than defining it.
Just for clarification on what that is, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do you have that noted down?
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on page five?
I have one more on 4.6.
Okay.
So when I, when I read 4.6, an aggressive dog is stolen, adopted, or given to another owner, inside quarters, previous owner must inform the town of the transfer prior to the new owner taking possession. Um, does the new owner need to meet all the conditions of having a nuisance animal? Is what I'm, was the question I would have if I read that? Yes. Okay. And should that be clear on there? Should it be added, I guess? That previous question was informed, and meet all prior conditions or something.
Could it be like, and the new owner must satisfy all required provisions for having an aggressive dog or, or an aggressive animal?
Something like that, but just.
Would that, would that, is that, is that what you're going for?
Yes, just makes it more clear as to that they have, like, hey, you got a new dog that's aggressive, you still have to follow the same conditions. It's not white to claim just because.
It's somebody new.
Somebody new.
Is that helpful? Uh, John, would you, would you recommend that?
Uh, to answer your question, Mayor Montina, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, to make it clear.
Okay.
Would it be easier to say the new owner must register if the dog is an aggressive dog?
I'm not sure what would be better, uh, wording for this. I, I looked at the sentiment, but I'm not sure what would be best wording. Anyone have any suggestions? I like the way, I like the way it's going there. Yeah, I think that, to me, that makes sense, right? They have to do all the things in order to have, um, an aggressive dog. Is anybody, um, opposed to this? No? All right. Anything else for page five?
Well, kind of moved, but it was B.
But, but one B.
Okay, so now we're, yeah, go ahead.
So now we're. We would kind of say repeatedly, uh, barking, but my dogs always really bark.
It's in the definitions.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. Okay, that's my, that was my, that's, yeah.
I know, I had that same question last time.
Thank you. Thank you.
So does that clarify what you're going with? Okay. Um, anything else for page six?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm gonna know that administration's gonna go in and clean things up. I don't know how you're gonna separate them out, though, um, with nuisance animals. I'm not sure how that's gonna work. Um, if we say, uh, oh, let's see, yeah, does not control reach the animal while the animal's off the owner's premises property. Um, I think something about keep them indoors between certain times, um. I think, yeah, you guys are just gonna go and fix those things up, right? Because a lot of this is an indication that the animal's sort of enlarged in the yard. Right, with the idea that cats can climb fences.
So I think this is one of those ones where it would be to kind of get, like you said, to get it cleaned up, to be in alignment with the others. Then we're all, everyone's all good with that, right?
Right, yeah, but we don't want to lose the intent of this for dogs.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
However, yeah, however it is.
That's gonna look up, yeah.
Anything else for page six? There's none. We'll go to page seven.
Uh, I have something on page seven.
Sure.
Uh, 5.7, um, talks about the appeal. And, um, the CAO is using our overturned designation. Um, I, I was wondering for clarity if we shouldn't provide more process about this. Is there a timeframe? First of all, just like, yeah, I think it's a lot of time things tonight, but like, should the appeal be filed with it thirty days or something like that?
In its current form, it is reflective of the aggressive, like, how the CAO can overturn that one?
Yeah, it is, yeah, I know.
So that, yeah, that's just, just a, a little point there. But, um, thoughts on this? Do we need to include process within this? Or timeframes?
Because right now, it just seems like very vague. I just talked to the CAO, and it seems like, no, you know, like, yeah, so how, how is that processed? And from the public side of it, I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm a, I'm a resident. My dog, well, is being convicted of being an aggressive dog, but I disagree with that, right? And here's my evidence. The dog, in Doggy Corp, right? That, that's, that's really my question, I guess, is, uh, you know, I, I know, I know, John, you're gonna make that determination. Um, but in the end, it just sounds like, uh, you know, we're not, we're not having any process, I guess, other than just CAO sentences. So that's, that's, that's my question, really, uh, uh, if, if we share it out, in a philosophical question.
I, I did hear some, a little bit of conversation that maybe he would like to share.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Montina. Uh, Councilor Potry, I think one thing that we could look at, actually, is, um, developing a policy around this um, that we can also break forward for review. Um, but policy without, I mean, here a matrix or a process or something that we can share with the public after, at the bylaw, if it is asked, something like that, yeah. So something to keep in mind, too, we can take policies along on each of these bylaws that may help process. They don't necessarily need to be in here. Um, sometimes these are very administrative in nature, and a policy will allow us to amend them as needed to, without having to amend them.
Did you have anything else?
I was just gonna say, this is a great example of an administrative policy that can be put in place.
Great. Um, so are, are, is that okay with you?
That's okay with me.
Great. Everybody else is okay with that, looking at developing a policy rather than having it in the bylaw? Is anyone opposed to that? No? Um, anything else for page seven?
Yes. Um, so 7.1 identifies seventy-two hours, but I wonder if we could extend that to ninety-six hours.
Thoughts behind that?
I just think, I just think it takes time for people to find their pets, basically. And if they, you know, obviously, they're gonna be, hopefully, they're looking for it, but um, maybe they didn't notice on the town website or wherever, or know to call the town or something. So I just, I just thought, you know, what's another few hours, so I just wanted to give Florence a chance to give a clean to that.
I'd love to hear the implications that you're putting in.
So to, to comment on, on, Mayor Montina, um, there's never ever, ever gonna be a time where the, uh, the dog owner cannot, or the animal owner cannot reclaim their animal. Um, the seventy-two hour, um, hold just, ju- just gives us the, the authority to, you know what I mean, to, to do stuff with the animal, right? Um, if maybe he's to go to the vet or, or whatever, um, but there's never, you know, seventy-three days go by, and you find out the fourth day that your dog is in jail, and you come to claim your dog, we're never gonna say, no, you can't have your dog back, right? It's never gonna be a thing. It's just, that, that's for, for like, for example, uh, we pick up a feral cat, right? Maybe that cat isn't very feral, maybe it's grandma's cat, and she just found it, right? But we, we can't, if we were talking about that there's never ever gonna be a time when we're not gonna say, no, you can't have your dog back.
But that, but that's what it's saying.
This just, this just gives us, uh, the time to.
Why not extend the time, I guess?
Sometime in some cases, it's, it's more exigent, where we need to, you know, let that animal needs care, right, or, or whatever.
But what you're saying, what you're saying here, town is rightful, I adopted, taken to rescue, this was seen or fostered, right? So that, that, I, I hear what you're saying, John, but it's not what it says in section one.
Right. I'm just saying, I think that's, that's usually what this is standard across, like, every reality, right? You have a set number, like, three days, we can be ninety-six. That's just what that number is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, why not, if we're already holding them?
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I, I guess that I, I'd like some clarification on that as well, because the way that I'm reading this is very much like, after seventy-two hours, you could take my animal and you could adopt them out. Which, in my mind, means that I can't get them back, like, they're, they're gone. Um, and so if, if the, if the situation is just so that there can be another action taken, whether it's to send them to bed or to do whatever, I think that this needs to be reworked. So I, I'm not, I'm not reading it that way anyways, and so I'm not sure how others are interpreting that.
But it's written that way, so it's, it's easy to interpret that way. So we have to write it in a manner that, uh, we have to write it in a manner that it can't be interpreted, that the town will take a doctor dog out after seventy-two hours.
I don't know if anyone recalls, but there was like, a social media post on this, sort of about this, I think it was a year or two ago. People were like, the town's taking the pets. the town's taking the pets away or whatever, right, like, I don't know. Young people are fear-bumming about it, because it says it in our bylaw, right, so it says we can, or we, we may, after seventy-two hours. I don't know if ninety-six hours changes, but it gives them more time if this was to follow, be followed from letter, so because that, because part of the way I look at it is, we can't keep unlimited animals, and if, you know, there was tons of animals, you know, we're gonna have to do something eventually, right, so that, yeah.
So, uh, Counselor Poltrier is proposing ninety-six hours instead of the seventy-two. Is anybody opposed to that? Not seeing any opposition, but I'm also now wondering about the clarity of this statement based off of just our conversation. Does anybody feel like this needs to change, or is this okay as is?
I, I think that bylaws, one or the other has to align. Either our actions have to suit our bylaws, or our bylaws have to suit how we do things. So if what, our, um, CEO is indicating that's not our practice, you can come, we, we won't do these things, then somehow the bylaw has to reflect what that is, right, I can, I don't know.
We can't keep that one forever either.
But you're right, and, and, and I know we need to have a degree of generalization within these.
Uh, maybe it should be days, I don't know, is that what it's worth?
You know, I, yeah.
Oh, you know, two weeks or something, I don't know, is that, is it too long?
In order to not putting it to ninety-six hours, basically tells the community we heard what they said, I guess, I don't know. And, and I think a lot of the stuff that we do just relies on, on allowing the staff to have the tools that says, you know what, this isn't a good place for it to go back to, we've had these battles, whatever, whatever the tools they need gives them the tools to be able to actually do that in the case where they have to. Right? Okay, so. Sorry, I just talked myself completely out of changing the language on that. I think ninety-six is fine without changing anything else.
Anybody disagree? It needs to be changed? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't really, um, have a thought either, wait for the, for the hours, I don't, I don't know if it makes too huge of a difference, but um, I guess, I just, a point of clarification, so if the animal is adopted, would it be temporarily adopted, and would that be a way to, like, get on top of this issue of, you can get your, your animal at any point? Because if it is adopted out, then, like, it's, you can't get it back, right? I'm, I'm still not, I'm still not seeing it clearly. So, sorry, I'm questioning through the mayor to the, the police officer, whomever. Sorry for jumping on the spot.
Uh, to, to answer Counselor Flores's question, Mayor Montana, like, there's never, like I, like I just explained before, there's never ever gonna be a time where you can't get your animal back, right, the, uh, uh, there's fostering periods, um, there's many things to be done before, you know, we, we adopt an animal. Um, it's, it's maybe it's a policy thing, um, on how we, we do that. But no, there's never, there's never a time, there's no set amount of time um, or anything where where you would be able to get your animal back. Right?
It's giving us the right, it's giving us, it's giving us the right to allow. Not saying we will.
Um, Harley has a, a thought on this. Uh, thank you, Mayor Montana. I think I would add, um, as well, and you can confirm too, the only exception would be in cases of animal abuse.
Uh, to answer your question, it's better, it's about like, that, that's, it's like a completely different, I think those circumstances are, are very completely different, right? There's, there's many things, there's many reasons, um, why we would have a dog in our kennel, the seventy-two hour hold or the ninety-six hour hold is more for like animals running at large, right? You pick up your dog running at large, after ninety-six hours, the dog becomes the town's. Right? You know, regarding animal abuse, that's, like, that's, uh, that's animal control, or sorry, uh, Animal Protection Act stuff, right? Those, those are the tools. If, if we were to, if we were to look at a case for animal abuse or neglect, we would go off of, we would go off the Animal Protection Act and what those, those, the, those sections would say, that legislation would say. And it's, it's very, we, we can create bylaws that on provincial governments, those. Right? So that's, that's where we would go with animal neglect. But yeah.
Thank you for that. Um, I, I think with this, I, I'm not exactly sure how, in my mind, this should be worded, but I do think that there, that there needs to be something. Um, because to me, the adopted component means that that animal's gone forever. The fostering is different, right, because that means like they're in a temporary home, that you need to get them back. And I know that, um, like, I know that we have faced situations like this in the, in the past. And sometimes, like, I, I even think too, but like, you know, it could take, take time for people to get the money for the fine or things like that, right, like, and so how do we how do we make this clear, kind of what happens, and I don't know if this is a policy, like, I'm really not sure what this is, but I'm not, again, I'm not sure that this is really reflective of, of, of the actions, like you had indicated in the pastor call bell. And so in some ways, uh, while I don't have any words, and I'm not sure if anybody else has any words about this, are we all kind of on the same page that this clause seven point one, um, needs to be reworded to be the intention of how we're actually doing this, doing the work? Is anybody in opposition to that?
Not a hundred percent, but I'm just thinking, like, if we had a policy that was associated with impounded animals, that would add the clarity without muddying up the bylaw, right? Because if something was to change with the process down the line, which could happen, right, if we're however, however things progress, it might be easier to amend the policy than come back in and amend the bylaw. So I think that would make the bylaw feel a little bit more evergreen, but if that policy is something that's public facing, people could look at that and say, okay, we'll see the steps that they're gonna take to try and contact the owner, and then, you know, when they would be looking to adopt the dog, or whatever.
All right, so we've got a couple of options here. Um, would we like to have a policy developed to go alongside of this? Or would we like to refer this to administration to, um, come back with their best recommendations on how to remedy this, this section?
I, 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 I think if we do have a policy, it still needs, this se- section seven, but we'll still need possibly to update it to tie into that, whatever its action is taken, I guess. Maybe, maybe it is fine, but I think there needs to be some thought about it to that, so I would, I would like to see the policy before we approve this, I guess.
So you would like to see a policy associated with this?
If, if, if that's the best course of action, I, I'm okay with redefining it as well, whatever, whatever.
So, just to clarify, then, would you be okay with administration taking this back and looking to see what is the best thing to, to modify this for what we're talking about? Yes. Um, Counselor Flores, you're in agree with that as well? Counselor Caldwell, are you in agree with that as well? Okay, so that's what, um, we'll do there, so we'll, we'll get rid of the ninety-six hour hold for now, if that's okay with everybody, and we'll just look at how we can review that, that statement, and administration can bring that back to us. Thank you. Um, we're just about done this bylaw, and then we will take a short recess, um, but let's just get this finished up here. Anything on page seven?
Uh, please, yeah, six point four.
Okay.
Um, does that have to, um, reflect how we do it? So, uh, if a, if an, if an owner's away at work on Friday and our, um, CEO picks up the dog and he's done work and the owner gets home and finds the dog is gone, does that, what does that look like? So the owner's calling and calling and calling, have, has has the owner been found? Do you know what I mean? Like, like, they, they can't get the dog over the weekend, right, typically? They have to wait until Monday. That's what I'm hearing from residents, they have to wait until Monday to get the dog. And so this doesn't seem to, it seems like you release the dog immediately as soon as the owner discovers that they you have their dog.
Yeah, so, so I'm assuming what you're asking is, like, is the practice that, like, because it's the same, like, regardless of the time of day or time of
Yeah, we used to do that, you used to call, you used to be able to call on call, Public Works on call on, on Friday evening, and they would release the dog to you. Do we still do that? I, I heard that we actually don't any longer. Do that any longer, that you have to wait until Monday and then you have to pay your fees through the weekend. So I, I, yeah, so I don't know what unless we wanna go back to, um.
I'm just trying to, trying to think how to answer that.
Oh.
To your call, well, um. So when I, to answer your question, I have to seek out the owner. I can't find the owner. There's processes on how we get the word out that we have your dog, our Facebook page or social media. I if, if it, if it's a Friday evening and it rolls over to a Saturday, I, we would like to have our impound fees paid before the animal goes home, but um, impound fees don't apply on weekends. Right, so you're not getting charged Saturday, Sunday for the impound fees, and it'd be the Friday, it'd be Friday, you know, the evening and then the Monday morning, right? Any part of a day is a day. Right, so, so no, you wouldn't technically be able to to get your dog on, on Saturday. We have that discretion to waive those fees. You know, um, you know, social media monitoring, um, helps with that, because I'm I'm coming, if it is, if the dog isn't there on the weekend, I'm coming on the weekend to look after the dog to make sure it's locked and fed.
You'd rather not, so.
And I'd rather, you know, if you want, you know, we want your dog to go home, we want your dog with you, not at our pound, right, so you would be able to get your dog on the weekend, um, and we could waive that twenty dollars, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does, yeah, it does, and so, so if, with that small change, I guess that, that better reflects then. Because I was thinking, if someone reads that the way it was written before, they're mad, because they're calling and they can't get their dog immediately, and they're saying, hey, right?
So we've got a proposed, um, change here, um, or as soon as possible thereafter. Um, is anybody in opposition to this? All good? Great, thank you. Um, anything else for page seven?
Maybe, maybe just a question, or I don't know if these could clarify, but under seven point six, so anyone who wanted to take possession of an animal from the town shelter must show proof of ownership before the animal is released. What does proof of ownership look like, I guess, is my question.
You burst into tears. You call their name and they, they lose their minds.
Is that, is that how we do it?
I try to, we hope they have a vet bill or something, I don't know, I don't know what it is.
To, to answer, um, Counselor Poltrier's question, um, proof of ownership can be, can be anything, it can be a little vet bill. I've taken, you know, I've accepted pictures on your phone, like, I, I have two dogs myself, and I have ninety-seven thousand pictures of my dogs on my phone. Right, um, if it's your dog, you're gonna have previous pictures of them, right, so.
Yeah, okay, okay, no, I, I like that.
Also, also, uh, uh, you know, your regu- your dou- your registration, right? Um, if the animal has been altered, like sprayed or neutered, there's a tattoo in their ear, and you have a piece of paper with that that tattoo number, um, connecting you to that animal, that's proof of ownership. There's so many things.
Do we, we do microchip reading at all?
I don't have the equipment for that, but vets typically do.
So if you took it to the vet, they
And they, they can scan it and see if it has a chip, yeah.
Great. So that was just a question, nothing, nothing there?
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like our, our administration has demand, so.
Excellent. Anything else from page seven? Moving on to page eight. Is anything from anyone? Uh, yeah, go ahead.
So under eight point one, it says, the officer for the purpose of investigation may enter lands which are private, or the private or public to satisfy complaint or investigation. So I'm, I'm wondering about, so if the owner was not present, if we could potentially add a clause or something that says, um, why, why the, a notice, basically, that, that would be left notifying of why. So, someone, right, so if you, if you're away from home and a police officer just comes into your property and, and it goes or whatever, you might wonder, why is it in my book, right? So if you left the notice on your door or something, like, we, we had to come investigate your property because of an animal or something, um, then when you come home, you check your security cameras or whatever, you're not capable of that, so that's why that's that just, it's a level of transparency, I guess, if we do have to do that, but that, that's really my question, I guess.
Wouldn't that be really good within our policies?
Uh, we have a lot of other things that the bylaw officer does in the bylaws, so I, I, I don't know where it goes best, but
Um, to answer your question, Counselor Poltrier, that, I have a system like that already. I have a, you know, a sticker, it's very similar to our, our parking, um, warning violation stickers. If I have to go to your property for a complaint or whatever, your dog is barking or whatever, and you're not home, I will, I can't get ahold of you, you're not answering your phone or whatever, I stick it out on your door. And that, that's, that would be
The standard process?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, but I guess, I guess I'm wondering if it would be clear to the, to the public if we put that in here, I guess. It's a minor point, but I, yeah.
In, in my mind, I think that that's getting too much into, like, the actual practice. Um, I, I would, I'm in favor of leaving it out, um, because things can change as time goes on, too, right, like, maybe you don't use paper anymore for whatever reason, and it becomes like an app, like, I don't know. And so, like, I'm just kind of looking at it that way and going like like, do the, do your practices or processes that you're already doing, I guess is how I would edit. Um, does anybody disagree, or would anybody like to see something added in here?
No, I, I think it would go well in policies or with sort of administration.
Great. Everyone's okay with that? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anything else on page eight? How about page nine? Yes.
Yeah, just a question with the subsequent offenses within twelve months. So, I guess, I was just beginning to think of this, if somebody doesn't register their dog one year, you know, and then you're saying it's gonna happen again within twelve months, it's like is that, I guess, I'm having a hard time verbalizing this, but it's just like, if that's something that they're repeatedly doing, failing to register a dog, it's like, does it ever hit that three hundred mark? Because if they're not registering a dog, is there a timeline associated with that? Or if they just say, okay, it's the end of January, well, it'll be end of January next year, and then it's like, oh, well, that's within a year. You know, we can't charge the full amount, maybe it's just me getting nitpicky, but it just seemed a little bit weird on the timing for registrations.
I think we charge them a hundred and fifty a year. Um, they would rather just register their damn dog.
Which is cheap.
What is their money?
Hey, it's like
Right?
It, it just seemed a little bit weird. I know this is kind of in alignment with how the other offenses are written, but
If I read, this was a section that I actually had trouble writing, um, for this bylaw, when it came to, uh, you know, registering your animal, and, and then fines associated with failing to register, and it's something that, that I was kind of hoping the council would have a discussion on, on what they would like to see, because I you know, is it, you know, is it January second on a Tuesday, and you haven't registered your dog, or you're now in contravention, or do we wait? Or you move to town and, and you, you just don't bother registering your animal? Is this some, is something, I had trouble myself trying to, uh, to write this section, so I, I was kind of hoping there'd be some dialogue between the council in order to fit the community.
Great, thank you. So I guess, a, a question on that for, for everybody.
I think there has to be a timeframe before you, before the final is out.
So, great.
Thank you. Um, I guess it would, it would depend, because, um, like, what, is it now, it's currently, everybody has their own anniversary, because, like, you know, my dog was born in October, and so, like, I registered him three months later, and then that's January's now my yearly anniversary. But that's probably more cumbersome for you, so it'd probably be easier to just have one set date. Um, what, what's that?
Oh, part of January.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I mean, like, I think that it should be this set date, right, like, that, that this is the date that they expire it to, because it, it sounds like it would just make it easier for you, and if it's, if it sits to one, it half does it to the other, and if it, if it makes it easier, I think that's what we should do. Does that?
So I, I guess that I'm kind of looking at this as going, like, I know that, like, dog records come out of January, like, and I I will, I will pay it, but like, what I will, I will pay it, but like, what happens to somebody who's delinquent by a day or something like that, right? Like, is that where it's going to be subject then to that? That like, is there leeway? Like, like how are, how are we looking at that kind of component as well, I guess? Is, is that what you were like looking at? Is that what you were hoping to have conversations around? Yeah.
The question, when are property taxes due every year?
Like, end of June. End of June or July? End of July, is it?
Is it, oh, it's June, July?
Sorry, July.
What if we change the date from January to July? And then when people come in to change, you know, pay their taxes, they go, oh, did you register your dog?
Thank you. As an owner, I would love that.
Yeah, so that, that's a thing. I guess I'm just wondering, um, if, if that were to change, what would the administrative implications be? Is that possible? Because I'm assuming that they're all kind of on a schedule right now. Um, so that would have to change mid-year or to implement that. So I'm not sure if you're able to speak to that or not, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be a lot of administrative implications in the change. It's just communications would be updated. Messaging would be included in different correspondence as well, up to residents, so I think we have fairly minor adjustments. So not a big staff change, but if there is any implications that I'm not aware of, I can surely bring that back to you.
Sure. Um, I didn't, oh, yeah, there.
Take it. One thought I have is, let's say a person has had a dog for a few years and every year in January, they faithfully come in and pay. Now we don't want them to come in January. We, we'll ask them to come in and, or pay at least in July. I think we're giving them six months grace, which, you know, maybe isn't the end of the world. That's not a bad thing. It's better than shortening it to six months only when they paid for a year or so. That would be just an implication, half year of a, a dog license, you know, I can't imagine adding up to significant amounts of money for the municipality and, and maybe a nice little gesture towards the community. Everyone who owns dogs.
Thank you. Um, is anybody opposed to changing that to the online taxes? So I guess that that would be end of, end of July is what we're saying? So it'd be July, during the month of July? Anyone opposed or?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but we're talking about the easy payment here and I just can't help wondering, is, can they just do it online in a self-service way? Basically, that'd be the easiest option.
I'm going to ask your administration about our online abilities.
Uh, thinking there, this time, do you not believe we're set up for online payments at this time? But it is something that we can look into further for website redevelopment applications and all of that, so. Uh, but it wouldn't be an immediate thing that we'd be able to address.
Because of the date, wouldn't matter, so.
Well, I think that, like, so for, for myself, when I, I got the notice, um, I, I paid it, but I think like you transfer something, like, not necessarily online. But I think it's about the date of when the notice goes out. So it's, it doesn't really matter how you pay it, it's just like, this is when we're changing it to. Right? And because I actually was thinking the same thing with property taxes, because we don't come in once a year to pay our property taxes in our mortgage. But we still get our, um, you know, property tax statement, right? And so.
Yeah, okay. Want to listen to that one?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, so, um, we're going to change this to July, is what I'm hearing? Nobody's opposed? All right, so we will make that change within there. Was there anything else that you were hoping to get, to get from this?
At this time, no.
No, okay.
Again, with any bylaw written, it's up for discussion, I think, that's subject to change, right? I, I was just saying, like, I had trouble writing this part on how to manage it and what would be best for, for the community, right?
Makes sense, yeah.
Better suit it, so.
I'm almost wondering if for the failing to register a dog instead of having the N A for like the, the subsequent offense within twelve months, is there a way that we could almost put like a little footer at the bottom of the table and just have like an asterisk or something saying this is applicable six months after the first offense? So that way it's trying to get people to come and register their dog or however long that is. Because if they're not going to pay it, there's no real reason for them to come and register, right? Like, I guess at the end of the day, we're trying to get them to register their dogs, but so how do we, how do we do that if somebody doesn't want to do that, right?
So to clarify then, you're saying that if someone could get, if they didn't register their dog, they get the hundred and fifty dollar fine now, they could get another one within six months rather than a year?
Yeah.
Like, because it would be back to like registration time again, essentially.
So my, my thoughts are just if there's a dog at large or something, right, and it's unregistered, and the owner comes to get it, then they can pay that fine and then save it six months later and for whatever reason they have registered it, quite seemingly would at that point, so I don't know if that's necessarily needed.
Well, because I think you have to reg-, like, if your dog is not registered and it gets picked up, you have to pay the registration fee plus the other fees, is that correct?
To answer your question, Mayor Montanier, that would have to be a policy thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe, maybe this is more of a policy type of thing that's looking at more of the.
Yeah, I really want to do it, right? I just thought it was kind of a little bit weird when we were talking about the yearly date and then never actually following within that year. So it's like, if we want to just kind of eat that, that's probably five, five minutes, too.
What's, what's people's preferences? Would we, because of it being an annual thing, should it be like a, an N A and applicable for the, the annual component? Do we want to have a good length of asterisks that was suggested? Um, does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Mayor Montanier?
Yeah.
We don't have to have a subsequent offense for every offense.
Okay.
We could just, we could just blank out. You know, we just get rid of the, like, these numbers that were created were just, were just pulled out of the hat. It can be any number that, that council wishes. But like for failing to register a dog, you know what I mean? It could just, we could just leave the subsequent offense blank. Maybe there's, there's nothing there. It's just a hundred and fifty dollars every time or whatever, right?
Okay. Yeah, so is, is everybody okay with that? All right, anyone opposed? Seeing none. We're now, does anyone have anything else for the rest of page nine? Um, I'm just going to check. I know that we, we went through the whole document. Is there anything else that came up for anybody as we went through that you would like to discuss? Or are we feeling pretty good about everything that we talked about for the revisions to this one?
I think we've done really well.
Excellent. Okay. I'm going to, if, if nobody's opposed, let's call for like a five-minute recess. Um, it is already close to eight thirty. Um, I'm not sure how everybody's feeling about where they're at in terms of, um, we do have another bylaw on the books. So, um, maybe we can just have a recess, see how that goes, and then determine next steps. Yes? Okay, let's do that. We will be back at like, at eight thirty.
All right, so we're back from recess. And are going to hopefully move back into closed session to continue with that conversation. But before then, can we get a motion to extend?
Yeah, I move that council extend this meeting to 9:30 p.m.
Excellent. I have a call question. All those in favor? That's carried. And then can I get the motion to go into closed session, please?
We have the language on that. What is the FOIP sections?
Pardon me, yes, I will pull that up momentarily here.
I'm sure I can probably tell you that as well. Do you know, yeah, if you're relying on my memory, it's wonderful what's early here thus.
It... It is section 24 and 29.
24 and 29, yes. So I'll make the motion that we go into closed section pursuant to Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, Section 24, advice from officials, and Section 29, information that will be available to the public, and that's at a later date. Is that correct?
Within 90 days as well.
Within 90 days, okay. Thank you.
All right, so council called with the motion to go into closed. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to go back into open session please?
I think that we're going to open session at 9:53pm.
Thank you. So the question, all those in favor, that's carried. And we do have a motion coming out, this was from before actually, when we were doing our animal control bylaw, and so I'll go to Councilor Paul.
Thank you. I moved at the committee of the hall, recommended council the following amendments to the animal control bylaw and ownership bylaw number 456-24. Page two include a definition of nuisance cats, page three add two to 3.4 and that is simply an edit. Page three, 3.3 and 3.15 should align referencing the fancier's license edit with more than two. Page four, 3.15 to remove the third dog and replace with additional dogs shall not be used for breeding. Page five, 4.3 add that aggressive dogs will not be permitted in the off-leash dog park. Page five, 4.6 edit the new owner must comply with the conditions imposed of an aggressive animal, sorry. Page seven, 7.1 edit and review for hold time for an animal and include clarification pertaining to the process regarding how and when animals are released or adopted. Page seven, 6.4a add or as soon as possible.
Thereafter.
Thereafter.
Did you figure?
No, it's just my head cold, I should have paid attention to that a little better, sorry. Page nine, align deadlines for fees to when taxes are due to July from January. Page nine, edit failure to register a dog within subsequent offense to NA.
Great, thank you for that.
Yeah.
So, Councilor Paul has made a motion, would you like to speak to this at all?
I think we put in a lot of really great work and I appreciate all the work that administration has put in this in advance. It's nice to have something that's really thorough and really appropriate for our community.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? If not, Councilor Paul also made a very long motion there, but I will call the question, all those in favor, that is carried. And we will adjourn at 9:00.